Hi, I'm Nick Barotten and I'm the Stewartsville Middle School Student Council President. Welcome and thank you for attending the Board of Education debate tonight. Please silence your cell phones and rise from the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I'd now like to introduce our moderator for tonight's debate, Ms. Anne Armstrong from Sussex County League of Women Voters.
I'd like to remind everyone if you haven't already done so, to please sign the pair of signing sheets in the back if you can do it on your way in. All right? Good evening. We have, there are six candidates vying for three seats in the Greenwich Township Board of Education. We have with us today five of those candidates. And before introducing the candidates, I'd like to explain the format for this evening. Each candidate that is present will give a brief opening statement. The person that is not here, I have a statement from her and I will read. After the opening statements, I will ask questions which were submitted either prior to today or submitted by the members of the audience this evening. If you'd like to submit a question, please raise your hand and a card on which you can write that question will be given to you. Take them out. Okay. To submit your question after you've written it, just raise your hand and someone will pick up your card. You may direct your question to a particular candidate or to all candidates. Please indicate your name on the card so we know that it's not somebody just throwing extra stuff, okay? Each candidate will have a set time to answer each question. Responses will be timed by a person sitting up front. The question and answer period shall last until approximately 8:15. If you hear any, then we have to. It depends upon the number of questions being asked. Then the candidates will give a brief closing statement. The candidates are Brian Sensi, Michelle Faechuk, Deborah Harper Smith, Scott Knuth, Beth Rooney, and Amy Sandlin. Michelle Faechuk, like I said before, we've got five of them here with us tonight. Michelle Faechuk is the sixth candidate and is not present, so what I'm going to do is read your statement to her that was provided to me before we actually begin with the opening statements. This will be timed by the timekeeper so we have time. You've got to remember that this is Michelle talking, not you. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the S&amp;M Student Council and New Jersey League of Women Voters for hosting this debate. It's a great opportunity to learn more about the candidates to make a more informed decision. I would also like to apologize for not being in attendance tonight. Unfortunately, I had a prior commitment that could not be moved. On April 17th, you will see the name Michelle Faechuk on the ballot for Greenwich Township Board of Education. I will be running as a candidate who will work tirelessly to make smart decisions so that the Greenwich School District will be recognized as the top school. Let me tell you about myself. I grew up in Paramus, New Jersey, and love all that New Jersey has to offer. From the shore to New York City, New Jersey is just a great place to live. My husband, Chris, and I have been living in Greenwich for 10 years. We have two daughters in Greenwich Elementary School, second and fourth grades. Our daughters cheer for Rocketry All-Stars, competitive cheering in Easton, Pennsylvania, and are involved in recreation basketball and softball. Both Chris and I are softball and basketball coaches. I am an account director for Forrester Research, an independent research company that provides advice to global leaders in business and technology. My offices are located in New York City, but I often work from home. I work with chief information officers and chief marketing officers at Fortune 500 companies such as Prudential, New York Life Insurance, Capital One, and the Bank of New York Mellon. I graduated from Lehigh University with a BS in Material Science and Engineering. Although I use little of the theory learned as part of the engineering program in my work today, I use the problem-solving skills that I learned at Lehigh every day of my life. If I had to go back to do it all again, I would study engineering. As I see it, the Greenwich Township School District is no different than any other corporation in America, with the small exception of producing profits for shareholders. As you can see, Michelle had more than I was able to read. Unfortunately, my timekeeper told me the time was up. All right? Again, they each have two minutes for opening statements, so let us begin then with the opening statement of Brian Sensi. If you cannot hear them, raise your hand and we'll have them speak into the microphone. They claim they can't suggest, so let's see if they can do it.
I've been known for that. Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. As Michelle said, it's a great opportunity for all of you to come out, to meet us, and talk a little bit about our views about the school board. I've had the pleasure of being on the school board for the past three years and learned a lot about the workings of the school board, this district, got to know some of the teachers, the administration, and it's been quite a good experience for me. I've lived in Greenwich for the past 12 years. My wife Jennifer and I moved here from Bridgewater, where we grew up. I have three children. Nicholas is graduating eighth grade, going into high school in September. My son Brandon, fifth grade, will be moving up to the middle school, and then Julie will be moving up to third grade. So I have a nice spread of the different grades. I've been fortunate to have Nicholas go through the school district and see the different grades as he went and the different challenges that are imposed on each. I am a scout master at the local Boy Scout troop here in Stewartsville. I also am the coordinator and coach for Boys lacrosse, and I've coached football for the past four years as well, although this year I will not be doing that. I'm interested in running again for the school board with the many challenges that it poses, but also to try and help wherever possible with the many challenges that are in our district. As you're aware, financial issues, high school, student enrollment, community issues. It's something I'm passionate about, being part of this community, and I've been blessed with meeting many of you and sharing that, whether with sports or scouts or through the school district itself. I work for AT&amp;T. I have worked there for the past 13 years as an IT finance project manager. I work from home. Gives me the opportunity to run over to a school when needed, although I'm usually late for meetings anyway. I appreciate you all coming out tonight. It's great to see some of the students here, and I look forward to our debate. Thank you.
Ms. Harper Smith?
Good evening. I'm Deborah Harper Smith, and I'm a resident of Moonsbury. And my family and I moved here five years ago. I'm a retired state police officer, pretty much an inactive PTO member. Sorry about that. And look forward to working with the community, working on the board, and giving my assistance of service where I can. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Sandlin?
Hi, it's Mrs. Hi, I'm Amy Sandlin. Just a little about myself. Married, have two children in the school district, both in first grade. They're involved in various activities, scouts, both of them, all the different rec things, basketball, football, softball. They're very busy. I myself am a retired police detective from the Warren County Prosecutor's Office. I started my career here in Greenwich Township as a patrolman. I've lived in Greenwich Township off and on for my whole life. My grandparents were lifelong residents of South Main Street. I graduated from Phillipsburg High School, went on to Centenary, graduated from Centenary College, held a master's degree in psychology counseling. I currently work at Centenary part-time as an adjunct professor, and I also worked as a child psychotherapist. Part-time, as both jobs, I get to pretty much make my own hours except for having to be in class on time. I wanted to join, you know, to run for the school board, to try to work from within school board, to try to make some changes and work positive things for our children and the future of our schools. I have been involved with rec. I started the field hockey program here in town and ran it for 15 years, actually up until right before I gave birth to the children, and since then it kind of occupied me, so I haven't done that. But I am actually going to coach softball this spring, so that should be another interesting adventure. Erin? And I look forward to answering all of your questions.
Hello, my name is Beth Rooney. Thank you for taking the time out tonight to be here, and you guys are very busy. This is an interesting time to run for the school board, especially since there's so many of us. You guys have a good lot to choose from. I am very excited about being a part of this board and implementing some positive changes. About me, originally I'm from Phoenix, Arizona. I moved here 10, 12 years ago, and I've been living in Greenwich ever since. I'm married. I have two kids, both that go to Greenwich Elementary School. I'm extremely passionate and extremely involved in my children's education. Before I started my family, I worked in the field of marketing for 15 years. I was an account director at Pepsi-Cola. I was involved in strategic planning and marketing for Pepsi-Cola, for Lyfton, for Starbucks, and lastly for M&amp;O Mars right out in Hackettstown. Those roles really enabled me to develop my critical thinking skills, detailed budget management, and most importantly, I had the opportunity to work with five or six or seven different groups of people inside that building to come and collectively plan one common goal, which is, I think, my biggest asset for this Board of Education, is to be able to take opinions from many, many people and drill down into the betterment of our children's education, which is, I think, why we're all here. Currently, I sit on the PTO executive board, which has really helped me to see the ins and outs of what the school does on a day-in, day-out basis. I'm on the Greenwich Nursery School Board of Trustees, which is the nursery school my kids went to, and I still sit on that board as their vice president. I've been coaching Greenwich Township rec for the past three years, and anytime they will let me, I am a room parent. I love being in the classroom. I think it's a great opportunity to see firsthand really what our teachers get to do and what they go through every single day. So after all this involvement, I believe that running for a seat on the Board of Education is just a natural progression for me. Like I said, I'm passionate about the education of our kids. I do understand the challenges that we're being faced with, and I will do my best to address these. A positive school experience.
Ms. Knuth?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Scott Knuth, and I've been a president of Greenwich Township for approximately 10 years. My wife Michelle and I moved here December 2002. We were married in 2001. We're coming up on our 11-year anniversary next month. I have a seven-year-old daughter who is currently attending Greenwich Township Elementary School in the second grade. And also, I have a 19-year-old daughter who is a freshman at Chester College in New Hampshire, in New Hampshire. She is from a previous marriage, and, excuse me. I am retired from the Hunterdon County Jail in April of 2010, where I spent my entire law enforcement career at the Hunterdon County Jail. I was promoted to a warden in April, August of 2006. I have about four years of administrative management under my belt, dealing with budgetary issues and having to deal with the political birth tape that goes along with getting any kind of a budget to be approved. During the last two-plus years of my tenure at the Hunterdon County Jail, I was tasked with, for two consecutive years, cutting 10% from our operating budget, which we were able to do so successfully. And I'm hoping to bring some of that experience that I have learned there, running that facility and dealing with government entities to the school board, and hopefully finding a way to help the school board to move forward through this budgetary crisis that is now facing all the school districts, not just ours. Thank you for your time.
Now time for the submitted questions. I'd like to remind you that questions must be related to issues and not personalities. If you'd like to submit a question, please raise your hand and a card will be given to you. The first question is directed to all candidates, and the question is, "How many Board of Education meetings have you attended in the last 12 months? As a follow-up, how have you kept abreast of board actions?" We will begin with, you'd like to take that first. Mr. Sensi, go ahead.
That's easy for me because Mrs. Applelight won't let you miss it. I have attended, I want to say, all of the board meetings, but I probably missed a couple of the committee meetings that I'm on, but all of the monthly board meetings I have attended. And the follow-up part of that question, I apologize.
How have you kept abreast of board actions?
Again, I had a little bit easier than others, being on the board currently, being on the Policy and Personnel Committee and attending all the monthly board meetings, and being on negotiations and a few other committee meetings. I've, it's been easier for me to keep abreast of the many issues that are going on in the school.
Ms. Harper Smith, would you like to answer that question?
Regrettably, I have not attended any in the past 12. Attended two, did not get here. And as for how do I keep up with it, I read the board bids and the minutes after every meeting. Thank you.
I myself have not also been able to attend in the last year. I've been teaching on Wednesday nights, and therefore that's the same night the board meets. However, I'm done doing that as of May 5th, I believe, or the 7th, if the semester ends, and I'm not taking another night class. I'm actually switching gears in my life and career and going back to school in September, so I won't be occupied at night. I read the board bids, I read the minutes, I ask questions, I talk with folks that I know did attend there, and I talk with the other room moms and PTO members if I don't understand something. And I've shot Brian an email or two, asking a question here and there.
Ms. Rooney?
Thank you. I have attended one meeting in the last 12 months. I keep abreast by talking to Brian. I'm in this school all the time. I sit on the PTO. A lot of times our meetings conflict with the evening quarter-day meetings, but I'm in the school literally three, four days, and we clearly read the board bids, clearly we get the information that's sent out. I am friends with, I would imagine, two-thirds of the board, so they're my personal friends, so I get to hear and understand the issues, especially as it relates to when I decided to start to run for the Board of Ed, I certainly sought that out. I met with the principal, I met with the superintendent, I met with some different teachers, existing Board of Ed members, because I wanted to be abreast, or I wanted to be on top of what the issues were, what our challenges were. So although I've attended the one, I feel like I can speak to the issues clearly.
Mr. Knuth?
I've also not been able to attend any of the meetings over the past year. My wife keeping up has been taking advantage of the current postings for the Board of Ed and posting the minutes also.
Okay, thank you. The next question, and we'll start with, how about Ms. Sandler? Sandlin?
I'd like to be Sandler. They make more money.
The question is, "Have you participated in the strategic planning process? Why or why not?"
I did volunteer to be on the committee. Unfortunately, I had the flu last week, so I couldn't go to Wednesday night meetings, but I do intend on going to the April meetings on that, just to get familiar with what's going on and the issues that are facing and to put my two cents worth, say, instead of sitting back and complaining after it's all over.
Mr. Knuth, how about you? Have you participated in the strategic planning process?
No, I have not, but for the most part, I've been required to work a lot of meetings. I work part-time, I'm shot by, but with me wanting to pursue this, they've been quite willing to work with me as far as schedule.
Ms. Harper Smith?
No, I have not. My daughter has obligations that I have to meet on Wednesdays and Thursdays. I miss her. Not today, I have work. Thank you.
Do I get to answer?
I don't give you. I'm sorry, Sensi, go ahead. I'm writing it down, but I missed it. Go right ahead.
Because I did participate. I wanted to be able to.
Perhaps you can explain to some people what this strategic planning process is.
Yes, I can. We had a great two-day meeting back, I want to say, January, like, the third week in January or early January, where we met as a community group. It was actually great to meet some new people who have the opportunity to come to board meetings, and we broke out into sessions and we talked about issues facing the community, issues facing the school district, and kind of put together a short and long-range plan for an action committee to then take that and run with it. And I am participating in one of those committees, although I missed it last week due to a cross, but I am participating with the committee.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The next question is directed to all candidates. What is your vision for education in the Greenwich Township School District? Your vision for education. Mr. Knuth? You have a vision there? Let's start with you.
Okay. Well, from what I've heard, my daughter within the Greenwich Township School, she's been blossomed quite well under the tutelage of the teachers that are here, and I would really like to see, be able to take advantage of any opportunity that we would have to continue to expand the teaching opportunities that the students have, to help them to grow and to more or less blossom even further, become productive members of the society, free, able to be free thinkers, proficient thinkers, and succeed in life.
Thank you. Ms. Harper Smith, would you like to say something?
I would like to continue to see our children excel where they have been. My daughter is a second grader in Greenwich, and she has excelled so much. Her teachers are all, have been just the greatest teachers, and I would like to see that continue on throughout her education.
Ms. Sandlin?
Sure. My vision for Greenwich education is to retain the good teachers that we have. We have many very, very good teachers. Both of my children are doing very well and excelling at school, and it's just wonderful for me to sit back and watch them. So I think we need to retain our good teachers, we need to upgrade our technology, and we need to make sure all of our students have textbooks that they can take home to do their homework, and then they have enough supplies that they need to continue their work in their class. I'd like to get back the programs that we lost, and of course, obviously, keep taxes down. Everybody wants to pay more taxes, but I think that the biggest, most important thing, in my opinion, is to retain the teachers that we have.
Ms. Rooney?
Vision for education? Thank you. A reminder. It's actually a very good question. I think our district does a lot of things correctly. I think we do have great teachers. I think we have flexible teachers. Our individual programs are working. What I'd like to see moving forward, which is the one thing that I want people to stop complaining about is, I want to go to Hunterdon, I want to go to different places. They have Blue Ribbon School. I want to be the district that people aspire to come here for. I want my neighbors to stop looking at other districts and to stop, you know, wondering if the grass is green on the other side. We have all of the teachers that we need, we have the administrators that we need, we have a lot of the tools that we need. What I'd like to do is figure out a way to stop being handcuffed by the budget and the bills that we get from the Phillipsburg High School so that we can take that money and keep it here and build the best programs that we can build to give our students the best education that they can get, here in Greenwich, not in other towns.
Mr. Sensi?
I think Beth hit on it. I think we should aspire to be a Blue Ribbon School. We should aspire to get more technology into our classrooms. We should aspire to pay our teachers more and retain our teachers. We should aspire to get better programs and bring technology. Every kid should have an iPad. This is the way of the future. And you're going to learn tomorrow in the school board meeting that we are number one in the state for K-8 per pupil cost. We're the most efficient school district with what we do with our money. The problem is, we need a little bit more to do more. And I think our vision should be either working with the township or whomever to bring more revenue in to then help the school district have more money to bring these programs to our schools.
Thank you. The next question, and again, it's directed to all candidates. What do you feel is the most important issue facing the Greenwich Township School District at this time? Most important issue. And if you are elected, how would you work with district administration and fellow Board of Education members to address it? The most important issue facing the school district. Anyone like to volunteer? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Rooney.
Like I said before in my last answer, I think our biggest hurdle is going to be the budget. And whether or not we can say, you know, one Board of Ed meeting or six months of Board of Ed meetings, we're going to be able to fix that problem, I don't know that that's the case. But we certainly have to pull our heads together, do some out-of-the-box creative thinking, figure out how we can maximize the resources that we do have to achieve the things I talked about before, trying to become one of those better Blue Ribbon Schools. Like Brian had said, we operate with a very low operating budget, yet our test scores and everything that we're assessed on, you know, we're top 20, 25% in the state, which is phenomenal. So if we can just figure out how to pool or reallocate those dollars back into our K-8, I really do think that we can make a huge difference. Because as a community, I think we all want to do that.
Okay, thank you. Beth? Mr. Sensi?
Sure. Obviously, finances, right? It's the same issues we have in our own personal lives. The most important issue or the toughest issue is always money. And not just balancing the budget, getting the budget to pass with the voters, what do we do with that money that we do get? How best do we utilize it to maximize for the school quality of life, you know, rise in health costs? We did some repairs to the buildings. All these things come together, and we have to remember, the school is a business. We are here to educate our children, and we have healthcare costs, we have heating, we have electric, and knowing how best to utilize that money, and sometimes people don't understand or see that it's not just about the teachers and supplies, there's a lot of other costs that go into the school district. It's not the pretty stuff, but it's stuff that has to be managed, and I think the school board and the district does a good job of doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Knuth?
I would concur. I'd say that the budget has to be the most pressing issue that is facing the school right now, particularly understanding that there was increased costs for students that are being sent to Phillipsburg High School. I also believe that we need to take a good look at the school budget, where money's going, where it's being spent on, and do some thinking outside of the box on how to better utilize the resources we have, how to reallocate them, what it is that we can do better to conserve money, keep it here within the school district. As I mentioned earlier, I was tasked with that in my last position, my work doesn't work, and we were able to successfully do that, but again, it required a lot of thinking outside of the box and utilizing the resources we had, including staff members, to help us out with that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sandler?
Well, at this point, when we're going down the table, everybody's got the same answer, right? It is money. Money is what's most important to all of us. It's most important in our own home lives and here at the school. And we want to best utilize the resources we have, keeping costs for all of us down to be able to better our school and our children and our education. The jobs that I've held in my past have been very detail-oriented positions, hoping to take that skill to be able to apply to the budget and help on a budgetary, you know, budgetary committee and put together a budget that best utilizes our money for our students without raising our taxes, you know, extreme amount. However, I'm also not afraid to say that there's times where you have to raise taxes. You know, like, for instance, this year we got hit with a bill from the high school. What are we going to do? Cut more things? Nobody wants to cut anything else. Everybody wants to bring things back. We want technology to go up, and we want our students to benefit. So budget is the biggest issue we have right now.
Ms. Harper Smith? I have to agree with all of the other candidates that the budget is the biggest issue, and somehow, some way, whether I'm on the Board of Education or not, I think Greenwich Township and Stewartsville Middle School should find a way to come together themselves and work out something that's going to be more beneficial for our children here, right here between them and this community.
Okay, thank you. The next question, again, it's directed to all candidates. What strategy would you suggest for maintaining programs and staff amid shrinking state education aid to the districts? Like, money is always a question. Um, let's see. We haven't heard, Ms. Harper Smith? We haven't heard from you first yet. Would you like to talk about it or give it to someone else? Again, we're talking about maintaining programs even though the state's giving you less money.
I would just think we would have to continue to petition the governor, and if we were, you know, short of cutting staff and cutting programs, see what else, you know, you can find to maybe get those things taken care of.
Next, who would you like to... Go ahead, Mr. Sensi.
I think tomorrow, when you come and find out about the budget, you'll find that we as taxpayers don't pay, fortunately, as much as we think we do. And then when you start looking at some of the other townships around us, and you realize... And then when you start looking at some of the other townships around us, and you realize the percent taxes that we pay versus them, kind of low, to petition the state for more money, we actually get higher state aid than probably most other townships of our size. I think we need to look at other revenue streams. You know, we talked about perhaps putting solar panels on the school to generate some income and also reduce our operating costs. Perhaps advertising, you know, other things that Scott was talking about, thinking out of the box, not just tax increase and not just state aid, but some other form of revenue stream to come into our township and help with some of our school costs.
Mr. Knouts?
It's a matter of thinking outside the box, reviewing the budget, what it is that you have available, where the money is going to as far as something as simple as supplies. If you could take a couple of dollars from some kind of supplies now, having dealt with the government, I realize that they give you a list of vendors that you're allowed to deal with. But if you could just research somewhere within those vendors where you could shift a couple of dollars away from those supplies to somewhere else, after a while, those dollars start to add up. The community programs, when I was at the jail, we had offered a labor assistance program to all community organizations, nonprofit organizations, utilizing inmate labor, or something like that. There are programs that are out there that are available, that maybe maintenance costs could be cut down. Just a matter of finding where we could cut that as cost.
Ms. Rooney?
Thank you. To Brian's point earlier, I was reading through the Board of Ed policy proposals that came through today. I don't know if you guys all got that email, but there are some, there's a lot of very good reading. A solar panel, the clementation is a great opportunity. I'm originally from Phoenix, and the taxes in Phoenix are so grossly low, I don't know how they pay teachers to come to work every single day. I called my sister and I asked her, how the heck do you guys pay for your schools and your teachers and everything else you do? And they have a lot of alumni programs, and they have a lot of corporate sponsorship programs. But thinking for that on the east coast is not necessarily the same as it is on the west coast, but it's certainly a strategy that we can look at and we can try to plan this coast. Literally, her taxes are $2,000. I have no idea how she can pay her students to go to school. Then again, Arizona's like 35 out of 50, top three in the country. So I guess she really did get what you pay for. But certainly, I think those types of strategies will certainly be something to look at within our.
Ms. Sandler?
Thanks. I agree with Beth and Brian in that I looked at the stuff that came out, and I really thought that a solar panel school would be a good idea, cut down on our own overhead costs, that would be a great thing. I read a thing about becoming an open school district, and I'm not quite swayed on that, but I would need some more information to answer some questions I have within myself as to whether or not that would bring in the money worth having kids outside the township come in. So I'm not really, I'm not buying that one yet, but I'm not ruling it out. It's something worth looking into. Obviously, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes, but sometimes that happens. But we do need to look outside the box. And I had heard of corporate sponsoring and advertising within schools, and that would be something to look into and look at to see if we could actually make some money that way.
The next question, again, it's directed to all candidates. Describe the role of the superintendent and the role of the Board of Education. Mr. Sensi?
Wow, she gave me this one, huh?
I can't believe that's not two different questions, though.
The role of the superintendent is the CEO of our school district. The buck stops there. They report, perhaps, still in the thunder from Beth, because Beth asked this question to Maria to help describe where the board sits. But as the CEO, she helps direct the district. Everything rolls up to her. The board really is there for policymaking. We don't run day-to-day operations. The superintendent, the principals and the teachers, they're here to do that, we don't get involved with that. We're involved with helping policy, set curriculum, budgets, health insurance, contract negotiation, a lot of the policy stuff behind the scenes. We work in a committee fashion, many of us are on multiple committees, and work together on a daily basis or less with Maria on any of the pressing issues as they come up.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to answer that question? The role of the superintendent?
Well, we can all just piggyback on Brian, right? I mean, he really hit it.
That's why I asked him first.
You know, Mrs. Eppleit runs the school, and the board's job is to work hand-in-hand with her in making policy, setting policy for the school, policy that we're all happy with, not just the board, not just Mrs. Eppleit, but you, the parents, who pay the taxes, who send the children to the school. So we all have to work together for this.
Ms. Harper, say.
I agree. Superintendent is the head person in the board, they're making the policy, working hand-in-hand with us.
Ms. Rooney?
I think it's also important to note that the Board of Ed is really the voice for the community as well. I think if we had to essentially report to, as Maria tends to report up to the board, the board then reports out to the community, not to speak for, but ultimately be responsible to the students. Because the board's job is to make sure that those students that attended that school are given the best possible education they can. And so while the board will create the blueprint on how that might get done, it's the administrator's job then to interpret that and implement that and inspire the vice, or the, I wouldn't say vice presidents, the principals and, not vice, are the principals in those schools and then trickle back on down to the teaching staff. Thank you. Mr. Knouts?
I mean, it's been fair much covered the different responsibilities are, but Mrs. Eppleit is godly responsible of making sure that the school board's policies are in place. She's also responsible for making sure that the school's in compliance with any new legislation that's been passed by the state or even coming down from federal mandates, and that the school board is aware of those changes and that the school board is able to act in timely fashion to meet the standards that were being put forth. By the same token, the school board also has the obligation to keep on top of the changes in legislation that occurs. But like, another important thing that the school board has to do is to make sure that Mrs. Eppleit and her staff have the tools that they need to do the jobs in the most efficient manner that they're capable of doing.
All right. The next question, again, it's directed to all candidates, and it's a long one, so listen carefully. Are you familiar with the inter-district public school choice program? If so, do you believe this program would be a good fit for Greenwich Township School District and why? If you are not familiar with this program, you should have read the February, March Board. Anyway, the question is, are you familiar with the inter-district public school choice program? Who would like to answer? Go ahead, Sam.
I'll take the heat off Brian for once. I did read the February ordinance, and I, you guys read into this in the last question. I'm familiar with it. I had to make a few phone calls and ask some questions about it and get some clarifications, and I'm still not 100 percent clear. So I'm still not 100 percent sure that it's for Greenwich Township. It's where other students from other, if we become an open school, other students from other programs can come into our school and go to school here, and we would receive money for them. I'm told that when I ask the questions, that we can say no to certain things, such as not everybody would be allowed to send all of their special needs children here, because we are a good district for special needs children. However, I'm not sure how, what, the way we get in that process as to whether or not we can refuse a child for behavioral issues or something like that, or if it would even change the climate of our school. I've talked to other schools who have done it, who regretted it, and I haven't talked to anyone yet who said that they liked it.
Thank you. Ms. Rooney, go ahead. It's the inter-district public school choice program.
Yes, I am familiar with it. And essentially, if someone's not, essentially, as we open our doors, other districts open their doors, our students can go to their school, providing that there is room, their students can come to our school, providing there is room, depending on what the parent's choice is, is basically a nutshell, is how the program works. I am for the program, and I am for it because it stems and it goes right back into one of those strategies we were just talking about, on how could we possibly generate funds differently than raising taxes or collecting them that way? So while we probably would lose some students to other districts, if it is a new source of revenue, I am absolutely for it in this district.
Mr. Knouts?
I am familiar with the program. I'm not entirely sure whether it's valid for the program, it would need further investigation as far as I would be concerned. It does have some good points, but knowing that you would be taking students and potentially negatively impact the budget to constraints on the school, how easy is it to take those students and get them back to the school district if we're unable to meet that child's needs? What kind of costs they're involved in doing that is something that really needs to be looked at. But on the other hand, I do know students, or parents of students in other schools that are looking to send their kids to a better school district, and I believe this is one of the schools that they would probably look at sending them to.
Mr. Sensi, go ahead.
I agree.
I am somewhat familiar with the integration school choice program. I think it has its pluses, it has its minuses. As far as funding for Greenwich, we go, sure, that's going to be a positive. But will our children be getting the same or better education by going to another district? We definitely know that someone else's child coming from another district is going to get a top-notch education here. I'm just not totally sold on, you know, it would be 100 percent good choice right now.
Thank you. Mr. Sensi?
I am 100 percent for it. It was a, we had many discussions at the school board about this, and just to clarify some things, that we set a number of positions per correct class grade. So if student enrollment is down at a certain grade, and Maria, the administration, feels that we can handle three or four students in that particular grade, being in the choice district, we would allow that many people to come into our district. It's a lottery system, if more people apply than what we can handle, it's a lottery system of who gets choice. The state pays us a set amount of money for each child that comes to our district, so it is a revenue stream. If that child has special needs and causes undue burden to our budget, we do not have to accept that child. So some of the costs that other candidates raised would not be as much as a factor. And to me, it gives an opportunity for children to get out of the district where they're not performing well, to come into our district. And if someone in our district wants to go to another choice school district that has an opening, it gives them the opportunity to try that as well.
Thank you. All right. The next question is directed to all candidates. And even though in their opening statements, they mentioned their volunteer activities, this is specific. Have you ever volunteered in either school and/or participated in or witnessed any of their programs or events? We're specific about the schools in this district. Ever volunteered in either school? Who would like to do that first? Ms. Harper, go right ahead.
Volunteer, you mean? Have you ever given your time? Oh, yes, I do lunch duty. Okay? I do lunch duty twice a month, and I help out wherever they need me, if they should need me. Okay? Fine. Anyone else?
Sure. I'm a room parent, and I volunteer to help the teacher on various occasions when it wasn't necessary for a room parent. I did the kindergarten orientation last year. We moms came in and helped the new kindergartner kids who came in as a classroom and stuff for them, helped the kindergarten teachers that way. And I got sucked into the variety show this year doing the finale with the teachers. And I'm not really sure how I got talked into that one, but.
Anyone?
Yes, I volunteer. I've been a mystery reader in kindergarten a few times. My son is in the play, I've helped out building sets. I volunteer for the PTO, do the Burger Barn. In addition to being on the school board for the past year, and I try to help out in my children's classroom. I can't be a, three years I've been on the school board. Thank you. Not just last. And I try to help out in my children's classroom. I've never been a room mom or dad, I just haven't had the opportunity to do that during the day, but being able to work from home, I have on occasion run over to the school and help out.
Ms. Rooney?
Have you ever volunteered? Yes, I volunteer quite a bit. I live in this hall three or four days a week. I'm sure the staff is getting tired of seeing me. I sit on the executive board of the PTO, which means I am in two meetings a month. We raise money for the school to fill in some of the gaps where our funding has been cut short. We've been responsible for putting technology into the classrooms. A lot of the smart boards that you see in the classrooms are ours. If there's a PTO event, I've been at it, whether it's Burger Barn with Brian, or Family Fun Night, or Ice Cream Socials, or any fundraising opportunity or anything PTO-sponsored, we are there, I am there. I have been a room parent every single year that my parents, that my children have been in school. I'm actually two room parents right now. I've been on lunch duty, I volunteered every Tuesday in the library last year. I'm telling you, if my kids are involved in it, I am involved in it, in addition to coaching for it.
Mr. Knouts?
My volunteering has been limited to just one of the classroom parties this year since my daughter has been in the school. Most of my inability to help out in the past has been limited by work responsibilities. But now I'm established myself with the, as I said, I work part-time as a shopper, I've established myself enough that if I can give a week or so notice to them that I have something coming up, they're more than willing to work with me now to give me the time.
Thank you. The next question is long, and on this pink sheet, it's really difficult to read, so bear with me a minute. It's directed to all candidates. Are you familiar with the send-receive relationship that we currently have with Phillipsburg High School? It's been mentioned earlier, so I'm sure we all are. But as a result of that relationship, we are incurring a large tuition increase that cannot be absorbed within the 2 percent cap allowance. How do you propose we address this with Phillipsburg, and what areas would you feel comfortably taking from to meet the deficit? Kind of like the send-receive relationship with Phillipsburg, it's costing you money, what can you take from so that everything stays okay? Mr. Sensi, how would you like to start with that one?
We actually don't have a formalized sign, send, receive agreement with Phillipsburg, which is kind of hard to believe. If you go back in time, we've just always sent our children there. And I think way back when, there wasn't a large population, it made sense. Since that time, and the huge growth of people like myself living here in the past 10, 12 years, between us and MOPAD and the other sending districts, we're probably more than 55 percent of the population with Phillipsburg. We do need to change something, we do need to have a formalized agreement with them. It's something that we've talked about on the school board, and getting to a point where we are within that 2 percent cap, so they can't raise tuition more than 2 percent so that we can handle it with any tax increases. As far as what would I cut, it's very difficult. Like I said before, we're one of the most efficient school districts. It really pushes back to Phillipsburg in that they have to cut. They can't be of a spend, 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 and then push that cost down to the sending districts, not just us, but all five of us. And until that mentality changes, it's going to be very difficult for any of the school districts that send students there to maximize their budget.
Thank you. Mr. Knouts, how would you address that, the send-receive relationship?
Well, again, there is no easy answer to that question. With the programs that the school has, watching my own daughter grow blossom within the school district, where would you start to make those cuts? It's not an easy choice that anybody would be able to make, and you would barely have to analyze the budget to see where there is room to take anything from. But if you're already running quite an efficient school district, as Mr. Sensi is saying, there is no money. Our children should not have to suffer, so it needs to be put back into creative thinking outside the box. Where can we afford to shuffle some money around? How can we bring the money in? Or bring Phillipsburg into compliance? Or if need be, do we explore other options for where we send students to a high school?
Harper Smith, would you like to take that? I pretty much agree with you, Mr. Knouts. As I said earlier, in a different question, maybe we ought to start looking at what we could do here instead of having to send our kids there into the Phillipsburg system. Because as long as they have. Because as long as they have that leverage over us, they're going to just continue to keep on raising those fees and know that we have to go with it because we don't have our own high school. So maybe, you know, to get with some other districts or since we don't have our own, maybe see what's best there.
Mrs. Rooney, go right ahead.
I'm actually just going to piggyback on top of something Brian had said because it was interesting. Between LOPAD and Greenwich and Bloomsbury Alpha, we represent over 50% of who goes to the Phillipsburg High School. Yet, our representation, I don't believe, on their Board of Ed is adequate. So if they have a, how many member board do they have?
Nine.
A nine-member board. And Greenwich gets one vote, LOPAD gets one vote, and then Bloomsbury, Alpha.
LOPAD.
LOPAD. Together, get one vote. We could never win a vote in Phillipsburg. I think the bigger issue isn't, what are we going to cut out of our K-8 budget? We don't want to cut anything. We're already running low. You can't squeeze blood out of a tourniquet. I mean, this is ridiculous that we are even thinking that we would like to cut out this budget. I think the bigger thing is, we need a bigger voice collectively as a community or as a board to say, we represent more than 50% of your students. We should get at least 50% of the voting power in these meetings. I think that would change the dynamic more than changing our budget here.
Thank you. Mrs. Samlin?
Thank you. Actually, I was going exactly with what Beth had just said. And Brian, we need more representation on Phillipsburg's board. Phillipsburg needs to cut, not us. I think we need to get together with our other sending districts and come together as a force to them and have a discussion and come to the table. Since there's no formal agreement, what says we even have to send our kids there? Why can't we look into another high school if we wanted to? Or our own high school? A new high school has to be built somewhere. And, you know, they've been messing around there with their stuff in their added district, trying to build a new high school in LOPAD, no less, not even in Phillipsburg, you know? So before the ground breaks there, we need to have a meeting of the minds between all of the sending districts and Phillipsburg and say, look, we can't be the meat of your budget. We run lean on our budget. We do our best job to budget our money and not to put our taxpayers, you know, having to fork out more money. You can't do that to us. We need to come to an agreement. And if we can't, then we need to look elsewhere.
The next question. On the same lines, but what do you know about the high school?
What do you want to know about the high school? It's trailer city. I am a Phillipsburg High School grad. I hate this, not to say that I'm a grad, but proud I'm a Phillipsburg High School grad. I was a liner, once a liner, always a liner. I always root for them and that's not a problem. They have good programs up at the high school. I think that you will get out of the high school what you put into it. So if you just go there, go and jethead and skate all the way through, you'll get a high school diploma. You go there and apply yourself and get in the college prep courses or the honors courses or even the AP courses and you'll come out with a better education. Higher on the list, you'll get into a good college and do well. They have wonderful extracurricular activities. They have, of course, sports. It's like the number one thing there, right? Football and wrestling. Basketball even takes a backseat to football and wrestling. So, and the girls have plenty of sports, too. You know, like I said, I think you're going to get out of it what you put into it. But I think we need more of a voice about as a district.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Mrs. Harper.
I don't know very much about the high school. Only what I'm being told, who different parents who have children there, they have a good program. If your child is willing to accept that, you know, if they don't want to learn where everything, they're not going to excel. If they do, they will. And they have a good sports program.
Thank you. Mr. Knowles?
I've had some friends who recently had their children graduate from Phillipsburg High School and aware that they do have some excellent programs there. And again, it's as long as the children are willing to partake in those programs and push themselves to excel or the parents are pushing them to excel. A lot of my thinking, though, with Phillipsburg is clouded by the vision of all those trailers that they have out there. I can just, my wife and I talk about it. We shudder to think, what if a fire ever started amongst those trailers? And for Green, that kind of sets the mindset that I think that those administrators have over the school. Just cram the kids into the boxes, get them going through. We'll help those that want to help themselves, but everybody else can muddle through. They need to be able to inspire the students, just as Greenwich has been able to inspire my youngest daughter here.
To be honest with you, until Nicholas, we had to go to the back-to-school night, or not back-to-school night, but like orientation for the high school. I didn't know much about the high school. Very interesting to learn that high schools changed a lot since I was there 40 years ago. And I probably wouldn't make it through Phillipsburg High School or high school in general. Pressures of academic, whether it's Phillipsburg or any high school, is much greater than what they were when we were in school, at least when I was. It was an interesting, enlightening experience in that the AP, the college prep, the honors program that they offer is top-notch. And there's kids graduating Phillipsburg, going to Princeton, military academies, Ivy League schools. To me, the trailers aren't really that big of an issue because it's a box. If the education is within the box, I'm not so worried about a 100-year-old brick building or a trailer for that matter. What is important to note is, of the top 100 kids that are graduating in the, in class, majority of them are Greenwich students, including the valedictorian for the past two years. And that's something to be said to the teachers of this K-8 district.
And I agree with Brian. And I agree, actually, with some things everybody can say on this. My husband is actually a P-burg graduate, too. And he has developed into a very normal and very successful grown-up. But really, Phillipsburg is built, it's really built, it's reputation, it's image of tradition. They have tremendous sports. People in this area love P-burg High School. And for a lot of reasons, I do understand why. The trailers don't bug me. What does bother me is that I believe the test score, if you took our kids out and you took LOPAD's kids out, their test scores are not tremendous. They don't really showcase very well without us. And so we basically are propping up the grades. And what I think that is, is a huge testament to our K-8. And I don't just want to send my kids to a, yeah, it's good enough. I want to send my kids to a great. So I definitely think there's some opportunity with the P-burg High School.
Next question. Again, it's directed to all candidates. What areas of concern do you have? Where do you see our money not being put to good use? An area of concern, and if you don't have an answer to that, is there places that we're putting into that you don't think it's good use?
Who have you heard? I know you just answered this one, but would you like to try that?
Oh, sure. We'll go right back to budget. It kind of plays into nicely what I was just talking about. I think our budget is about as lean as we can run. I think potentially, and I won't say this definitively, but potentially, we'll have to look at it. I think the budget that's not going to the right place is the exorbitant fees that we sent to P-burg High School. I just really don't think that it's fair that those fees can be raised in excess of what we're allowed to increase to our taxpayers. I think there needs to be a balancing act there. Do we eventually get to the $13,000 or $13,500 we're spending for students? Sure. But I don't think they need to get there in two years, which is the way that they've been asking us to get there. So if we had to take a piece of our budget that I think is unfairly being spent, I think that we are unfairly sending too much money to our school.
Yeah, I agree. I think that, we've mentioned it many times, I want to reiterate that we do a good job with our money here. The money that leaves here and the amount of money we spend for Phillipsburg High School that is exorbitant. Perhaps one of the things we look at doing is maybe becoming a K-9 and teaching freshmen here. It's costing us $1.3 million to send our freshmen there, approximately. And I believe that maybe that $1.3 could be utilized better here and perhaps respread it amongst the thousand students here. That might be something to look for.
Mrs. Harper Smith?
Well, I totally agree with both of them in that we need to look at the amount of money we're sending to P-burg and can we do it cheaper another way? Can we do it ourselves here? Can we group together with the other districts and come up with our own high school? Can we check out North Hardin High School or Del Baal? I mean, is it that much more of a bus ride to either of those versus busing our kids to P-burg? Other areas of concern I have is technology. I think all students should be able to sit down in a classroom and take a test on a computer together at the same time. And I don't think students should have to use their own iPhone to take the test because there's not enough laptops for the students to take tests on. I think students should be able to take a book home to finish reading it because if you finish reading it in class and not be told, no, we don't have enough books for everybody, so it's not fair if you get to take it home in jelly cans. So I think we need to look at that, too.
Mr. Knowles?
My biggest problem with the budget that we're facing right now is, as the others have mentioned, is the amount of money that will be going to Phillipsburg High School. Don't we have the answer to that? But as I alluded to earlier and it's been alluded to again here, do we look at possibly other arrangements for our children in going to a high school? As far as the money that is staying here within the schools, when I watch my daughter getting ready for school in the morning to see how anxious she is to get here, when she's sick, having to argue with her that, no, you have to stay home because you're sick, I don't see a waste of money that's going on within the school district that inspires a child to want to go to school that much.
Thank you. The next question. Again, it's directed to all candidates. Do you have any ideas on how to improve attendance at meetings? Or at least find out the opinion of the residents about important topics or areas of concern?
I don't know how we're going to increase attendance at meetings. Most people are busy. As we all know, we lead hectic lives and not everybody's going to take time out to go to a board meeting. I think we need to create maybe, Miami is like, even if it's a Facebook page or a blog or something where people can log on, see what happens at the meeting, post their concerns, post their questions and be answered by board members at a later date. Video-taking a meeting is, you know, is another option which I hear is going on. It can be posted. You can watch it on the internet. But you still need to have a place to go to post your concerns and your questions to find out answers to what's bothering you. You know, they're discussing an issue and you have a question, you should be able to get an answer. So I think we need to start utilizing some of this technology that's going around.
I'm a firm believer in offering cookies. We have scall meetings and we have cookies for parents to attend. You know, it's something we struggle with on the school board. We talked about, I wish Diane was here. I don't think she is. It was her idea, I think, the brainchild behind board bits. It's a, you know, a quick synopsis of things that go on. We have the website.